All right, so thanks everybody for being here. We got quite a crowd today because I think this is one of the questions that I get asked most often. How do they decide what they're going to do on street repair and street renovation? And so I, we were lucky, we got Deputy Director Morrow from DMD to come talk to us today. We're going to let her go through a presentation. We're going to hold the questions, everybody could go on mute so we can all hear her. And then at the end, we will do Q and A for any questions you may have. So again, thanks for being here Deputy Director Morrow, I will turn it over to you.
Well, thank you so much, and thank you everyone for being here today. I'm actually really excited to give this presentation because not only is it one of Counselor Feeblecorn's most asked questions, it is also the most asked question in our department. And the more we can communicate and educate you guys on our process, the easier it is for us to understand why we're choosing which roads and which ones give priority. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. And you guys let me know if you can all see it. Is everyone good?
Yes.
Awesome, let me move some stuff out of the way so I can see it as we do the presentation. We work with a vendor, RAS, Roadway Asset Services. And they actually put this presentation together. I have sat through this presentation several times, but this is the first time I am actually the presenter. So there might be a few questions, if you get too technical, that I'll have to go back to our vendor for. But I think for the most part, we'll be able to answer your questions and you guys should understand our process. So let's go ahead and dive in. And let's make sure this is okay, good. The city of Albuquerque, so we measure our lane miles, we have our centerline miles. So we have 2,298 linear miles of paved roadway in the city of Albuquerque. And we maintain approximately 4,676 lane miles. So that the difference between those is where we have two lane or three lane streets. That's that increase in number you've seen between linear miles and lane miles. Our paved area is over 37 million square yards. And our vendor gave us this nice little piece of information. It is enough pavement to pave a two lane road from Albuquerque all the way over to Disney World and then up to Portland, Maine. Does that give you an idea of how much pavement we are maintaining in the city of Albuquerque? That is a lot. Our network replacement value is over $2.8 billion. And what this presentation is all about is PCI. You will help hear me say the term PCI over and over. It is our pavement condition index. If you need me to, if you're like, hey, I forgot what PCI means. But it is a score we give to every single road in the city of Albuquerque. It scores from zero to 100. Zero would be a dirt road and 100 would be a brand new, just paved out of the box road. We'll also discuss preservation. We have several, we do preservation techniques that are less expensive on roads that are a certain point. And we also follow our national guideline. There's just an engineering term, our ASTM 6433 when evaluating our pavements. So here is one of our things we look at is this breakover. I have my thing in the way, you guys, I'm sorry. Hard for me to see this thing. Our breakover of where we go from a major rehabilitation, just a pavement preservation. If you look, what we do is if it's going down on our pavement condition, like say it's at 100, and there'll be more slides that'll help explain this as we go. But as it gets down to like an 85 or 90 area, we'll do a surface treatment and that'll bump it back up to this next line here. So we'll keep like bumping it back up like up 10 points and then it'll degrade and then up 10 points. And this is showing if we allow it to continue to degrade, if we get to that dashed line in the middle, now we have to do a major reconstruction. Now we can't just do a preservation, we now have to do asphalt replacement. And that might be a mill and inlay and it might be a full asphalt replacement project. Yeah, okay. This is the fun one. This is the unit that Roadway Asset Services uses to evaluate our pavement. If you can see on the front end, they have this laser profiler and they drive every street in the city of Albuquerque. When they are driving a two or three lane street like Montgomery or somewhere, they drive the outside lane because they are looking at the outside lane gets the most traffic on it. It gets the most braking and acceleration, people going into driveways to, you know, turning at intersections. So it's going to be the lane that has the most wear and tear, has the most impact. So we use that outside lane in the evaluation. And they have this 3D laser on the back end or on the front end. And then on the other end, we have this, another laser system that looks at, oops, I didn't want to do that. Looks at the cracks, it measures the cracks. So we have these two laser systems as they're driving down, recording everything on the street. We also have this GPS up on top global positioning system. It's where we have the vendor helps us with our asset maintenance. And that's things like looking at our sidewalks, our curb and gutter, maybe counting signs. You can even use it to count the number of fire hydrants and locations. But this is, this is how we get our data. And here's just some examples of what that GIS, that 3D camera top, what it sees. And then it uses a, you want me to admit that? Go ahead and admit that person that came up on my screen. And so this is what that top one, the GPS system looks at. Every time I click on something, it takes me out of the presentation, so I apologize on the pausing. So here's what they find in our asset management. Here's all our curb and gutter, over 3,000 miles, traffic signs, pavement markings. This gives you an idea of what we are managing in our streets throughout. And this, this is all taken through that asset management system, recording as they go from street to street. Here's kind of the, where you put it into the model. This is a little bit deeper than my, you know, I kind of just believe them, but they, they take all the data and they put it into a model system. And they look at the sensors, they do, they quantify, make sure that it's sensing everything correctly and getting you the correct cracks. And they put it all into this database and evaluate it from here. This is kind of the magic box for me, that you take the data, you throw it into the model. And then after it's in the model and it kind of tells us our PCI, it gives us that number between zero and 100. We actually do infield reviews. We pick a random number of streets and then we go out, look what the model gave us. And we go look at the streets and hey, has the model given us a good indication of reality to verify our model? Okay, and so here's all the streets of Albuquerque. And you'll see over on the bottom right, a very good street is in green, that's 86 to 100. A good street is 71 to 85. Fares are yellow, then we get to our poor classifications and our very poor classifications. And here's where you can see that every street in the city has been evaluated. And then over on the top right, you'll see where we give each section of street a number. You'll see the 50, 71, each, each segment of street will get identified with a PCI. This is what makes the data easier to see, right? So here, you can see that we're at about 6% very good. On average, if you look over here across the US, it's, let me see here, very good, there's the app I want. 15 to 20% is about the average. So our very good, the city of Albuquerque is sitting under the national average in there. Then we look all the way to the other end, the very poor. And we really want that to be less than 10%, 15% at a maximum. So if you look at ours, we're actually doing okay on the very poor compared to national average. So we're kind of sitting in the middle sort of. And then you see most of our roads are in good or fair condition. Now, how do we select our streets? Now we have this prioritization and how we arrange them. And some of it, you know, we use a combination of the PCI that we detected as well as financial optimization. And so here's some of the things we look at with, you know, how close is a road from going from very good to just good or from good to fair? We look at whether it's concrete or asphalt because concrete has a longer life than asphalt. So we know that, that that street's going to deteriorate quicker. We look at classification arterials, they get more wear and tear, a lot more traffic, the strength and then our PCI condition from best to worst in general. These are the criteria that we start looking at. Now here is where you see, this is our maintenance cost. So on a very good road, to keep that in that very good, that first slide I showed you, that kind of bumped back up every time we did a treatment. This is where if we invest $5 a square yard in a very good road, it'll keep it in that very good condition. And then if we have a road that's in good condition, it costs about $10 a square yard. And then it goes up to 11. Let me pull in the rest of these. Let's see, I know he has this set, this makes it a little easier. So you can see there's a $5 difference. So basically, the, the areas outlined in yellow, those are our critical roads. Those are the roads that are about to drop down. And that's going to cost the city another $5 a square yard if our very good drops to a good. Now if our good drops to a fair, that costs about the city about an extra dollar a square yard. But look at what happens at our fair to poor. That's an extra $44 a square yard the city has to pay. So when we choose streets, these little yellow blocks, those are our primary streets. Those are our primary focus. That's the ones we want to get is before they go into the next category. And especially that one that has that $44 changeover from one category to the next. And that's basically the presentation. I'm happy to take any questions at this time. And I'm going to go back to this slide because it's kind of the meat and potatoes of this whole thing, right?
Thank you, Jennifer. That was, I, I learned a lot. If folks have questions, let's see. Maybe we want to stop screen sharing for a second so we can see if folks have questions. And we can always pop it back up if we need to. If you have a question, just raise your hand. You can do the raise hand function or you can just wave at me if you have a question. I will, oh, oh, Steve has a question, yes.
Hi, that was a really interesting presentation, really appreciate it. And I can see how big and complicated the problem of road maintenance is. And you know, it's, you've got my sympathy as well as my support in trying to keep up with this. It's a big, a big issue. But I think one of the issues that wasn't addressed by the presentation was, what kind of changes do you make when you do the improvements? You know, are they consistent with complete streets? There was an incident on Lomas out in front of Sprouts where a gentleman by the name of Stanley Atkinson was killed. And I went to a GATSI meeting about that and there was a discussion. And I believe it was Tim Brown from DMD who said, yeah, well, there are engineering problems along there that we're going to address when we repaved that section of Lomas. And a year or two later, they repaved Lomas and, but there wasn't any changes made to the engineering along there to address the, what was explained as the cause of Mr. Atkinson's untimely demise when he was hit by a car crossing in an uncrossed crosswalk. And so I guess my question is, you know, when you, when you're doing these, these repavings and re-stripings and stuff, and when there have been engineering problems and identified, how come they're, they're not being addressed when, when the improvements are being made? Thank you.
Thanks for your question, Steve. I really appreciate that. That gives us a chance to talk about our Complete Streets, which is a program I love, which I'm going to plug it. It got an award by the ACEC Foundation, so I'm very proud of my staff on that. So there's multiple answers to that question, right? It all depends on where and what level of treatment. And, and we'll go back to like a basic treatment where we're talking about that very, very good and good streets. I always describe that treatment as the equivalent, when you think of your car, like an oil change. That's, you know, people are always like, why are you doing work on this street? It's in way better condition than ours because it's a lot easier to do an oil change than, than have a blown engine and replace the whole thing. So now we have residential streets and we have arterial streets. Residential streets in general don't have striping so that we don't have that concern when we're doing those, those types of streets unless we have special bike boulevards or something that leads us to striping. When we are doing arterials, every single street that we put into our maintenance program gets reviewed by Complete Streets and we evaluate at the time because we'll do a mill inlay or, you know, basically take up all the striping. And this is our chance to, to see, we keep the curb and gutter in the same place. But this gives us a chance to look at, can we use that space more effectively? Do we really need three lanes in this section? Can we go down to two lanes? Can, do we have, if we have two lanes, can we go down to one lane? Can we fit in a bike buffer? Can we fit in a bus pullout and things like that? So yes, every single street is evaluated as part of that. I'm very sorry to hear about the example you, you put at me and I apologize. I haven't been with the city long enough, so I'm not familiar with what you brought up. And I cannot speak to that specific scenario. But I don't know, Counselor Feeblecorn, have you been involved or you're aware of our Complete Streets process and that we have a committee and everybody reviews it and we talk about, you know, where it makes sense to add bike lanes and such? So that is a very large part of our, our street maintenance program is re-striping and evaluating streets as we do them.
Yeah, and I, I'll just add in that our Complete Streets ordinance is amazing. And I, we just did an amendment to the Complete Streets ordinance that I was very, very proud to sponsor and work on to add in green storm water infrastructure into the Complete Streets ordinance. But I will say that I, you know, I hear your question and I think it's a really valid one. I, I don't know that we always, you know, street repair is not always a complete redo of the entire street striping determination of where we need bump outs and, you know, new, new, new lane designations, all of those things are, are different process. And it's a great point that they could try to, we could try to integrate those more. I will just real quickly share that we are working on a study of Lomas in particular from Gerard down to, I forget where it stops.
Washington.
Okay. To really look at kind of how to improve it for pedestrian and bike safety. Because there's just, it's, it's really scary. I'm a pedestrian, I'm living in that area. I try to get across Lomas on foot and it is not super easy. And so that study is a separate study from street maintenance. But that is something that we are looking at right now for that stretch of Lomas because I definitely agree that it is, it is a little, you feel like you're taking your life into your own hands when you try to cross that street. Okay, follow up Steve or is that good enough for now?
But, and I could add to Steve's question about, I mean, if, if targeting fatalities, we now have a fatality group that we all meet monthly. And APD has now started a fatality section as well. And we actually look at, it's about two months behind. So like last month in April, we looked at February's fatalities throughout the city. We, APD gives us the details on how it happened, typically speeding, typically often alcohol involved, things like that. But we look at each individual fatality, we look at the causes, we look at, was there a crosswalk near if it was a pedestrian fatality? We look at, are there any things that we can implement or that we should start looking at the next time a Complete Streets comes up or the next time we have the ability to change that, that layout? So we are actually looking at every single fatality individually at this time.
Thank you, Steve, did you have a follow up?
Yeah, Tammy, thank you for the opportunity to follow up, I really appreciate that.
Of course.
I mean, well, one of the things about Complete Streets is that it's sort of optional and non-obligatory. And, and like I say, when I was at the GATSI meeting, the representative from DMD said, oh yeah, we've identified engineering problems with this and we're going to address those when we redo it. And then it wasn't, wasn't done. And a similar example is when I go, I go to GATSI meetings pretty regularly. And, and a couple of years ago, I think it was Bohannon Houston did a, a study of East Central and recommended a road diet there. And the city for, I could never, I could never figure out, or it was never explained to me, who made the decision not to implement the, the road diet? But then, then just recently, you know, we had news coverage of, of multiple fatalities on East Central. And, and if you're familiar with that place at all, you know, when it goes from Louisiana to Wyoming, it blows out from, from two lanes in each direction to three lanes. And that releases all this traffic, you know, like in, into a drag strip kind of situation. And I suspect that that's, you know, the reason why all these people are being killed down there. You know, and obviously the population is, you know, there's a lot of homeless and people with mental illness and impaired from substance abuse and stuff like that. But you know, you got to work with the population you have, not the, the population you wish you had. And, and I think cutting it down to two lanes, you know, between Louisiana to Wyoming, you know, not only would it slow traffic down, it would reduce the number of lanes for these, these folks to cross. And, and that was identified in Bohannon Houston's recommendations. And yet the city didn't implement those. And you know, a few years later, we presented with this problem. So I just wonder why, why aren't these, these, uh, these kinds of things being implemented when they're identified? But then they're not, they're not implemented. Thanks, thanks for giving me a chance to follow up, I appreciate it.
Sure, Steve. Director, do you want to respond to that? I also have a response to that, but I'll let you go first.
Well, actually, one of the things is we are, we are looking very closely at that section. We do know it's a high fatality and we're looking at what we can implement. So that is on our radar at this time, Steve.
And I'll just say, Steve, real quickly, that that's not in my district. So I don't know the details on what was done in the study previously, I can't speak to that. But I will just say that my experience has been that anytime there's going to be a change, neighborhoods get very nervous and there's a lot of opposition to change of any sort in a road. And so I share your frustration. I think that there's a lot of times when it's very clear what we need to do for safety and for pedestrian safety and for bike safety. But, but you know, we have to understand that we live in a community where everybody gets a voice. And so it doesn't always move as quickly to the answer that I think is the obvious answer. So I think, I think you and I would agree on a lot of those situations, but just wanted to throw that out there. I'm going to go to Ben and then I saw Roseanne and then Susan. You don't have to hold your hand up, Roseanne, I got you. Go ahead, Ben.
All right, yeah, I just had a question from like a bicycling perspective because I ride my bike a lot. So I was wondering if this scanning system had a way to like filter the data on, on the analysis side to show, because I'm thinking about like a road where maybe 95% of the roadway is good, but it's got these giant transverse cracks from curb to curb, you know, every 30 feet that want to eat my bike tire. Where, you know, from a car driver perspective, that might be seen as a good road. But from a bicyclist's perspective, like I don't, you know, I don't feel safe on that sometimes. And yeah, that's, I just kind of wonder if you guys had a way to filter roadways for bicyclists? And also if, if any of this data is ever going to, if there's a possibility to make it publicly available so we can geek out and look at this ourselves and try to figure out and how this thing works. So, and also shout out, thanks for the bike plan, it looks amazing. Tell all your colleagues at DMD, really appreciate it.
Thanks Ben, I appreciate that. We don't specifically look at roads for bicyclists. As I said, we always do the outside lane, which is where bicyclists tend to go the most. So we get the worst case scenario when looking at the PCI for those types of roads. We hear you about those transverse cracks. Those are, they are actually the most difficult to do maintenance on. And they're very expensive because they're just frustrating because they have such good asphalt in between with a huge crack. We've been trying different methods to address them, we're still working on that. I hate to say it, there's not a great answer for that. We're, we're trying our best and we're fitting it into our maintenance as best we can. So we're still working on it.
Thank you, Roseanne.
So I just have two kind of mundane questions. When you say outside lane, I think you just answered it. You mean the lane closest to the curb?
Yes, the one that will have driveways and will, you'll be turning right. That's, it's the, the most used lane. So if you have a three lane road, the outside, the lane closest to the, to the businesses will always be the most used.
Yes, and then you talked about the model that you use to actually calculate the index. Is that a, an RAS model or is that a national model?
That is designed by RAS, yes. And they customize it to us. We, it actually, if we just went straight with the model, all of our maintenance monies would go straight into arterials because those are used by the whole residents and they get prioritized. We actually force fit, I think we put 10 million a year into arterials and I believe 5 million a year into residential. Don't hold me to that statement, that's approximate. But we force fit it because we do want to take care of the resident, residential areas as well. So, so we tweak it to meet our need.
Thank you for the presentation. It really gives you a sense of the enormity of what you're dealing with.
Well, thank you. And something I didn't mention during the presentation is we do this evaluation of the roads every five years. The last evaluation was done 2021. So we'll be starting on this again 25, 26 timeline and doing another evaluation. We also, if we have a maintenance project and we go in and, and we do a mill inlay on a road, we go back into that program and we update if the PCI was at a 42 and we do a mill inlay, we update the PCI to the new one. You know, whenever a subdivider turns a road over to the city, we evaluate the road at it. We also try and keep our eyes on the roads that are like up against the foothills because they tend to get the snow, the ice more salting than the rest of the roads. So we'll actually bring those PCIs down. They'll often come, we'll have to manually bring those PCIs down. So we try and keep up with it as best we can in between those five years. But we do come back and do the entire city every five years.
Thank you, all right, Susan.
Hi, thank you for that presentation. I wonder if you could maybe talk a little bit about how you make decisions about what surface material is used? I know there are many different considerations, prime among them being cost probably, but also sound, you don't want to put, you know, when you go from a concrete road onto an asphalt road, you notice how much quieter it gets. But the overwhelming thing is probably cost. But right now, given climate change and given that we live in a very hot place with a lot of concrete and asphalt and the reflective, the heat reflective quotient of both of these materials is very different. The black surface absorbs and reflects more heat back into the atmosphere. And right now, there's also, some cities are moving toward using different surfaces. They're doing reflective pavements that don't create as much heat reflection. So I'm wondering how your considerations about surface have to do with our being a very preeminent heat island here in Albuquerque. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan, that's a great question. And yeah, I, I understand wholly what you're saying. And you're right, when it comes to cost, that is our primary deciding factor. We have much more need than cost. And so when we're just looking at our maintenance program, we stay with what we're able to do the most affordably and reach and the most residents in the city of Albuquerque. But that gives another great plug for Counselor Feeblecorn's GSI. I love that she has that in there. We're, we have a project that I'm hoping that we can put some GSI things in. I'd love to see, you know, we talked about things like, we did a big push towards water conservancy and, and everyone putting in rock. But then we had a lot of our old cottonwoods die because we didn't realize that watering the grass was actually keeping our cottonwoods alive and, right? Like we do things that we don't realize the big picture. And so I really love that Counselor Feeblecorn is pushing the GSI. alive and right? Like, we do things that we don't realize the big picture. And so I really love that Council Feebelkorn is pushing the GSI. I also would if if Council Feebelkorn would love to do a pilot project, if you want to look at somewhere where we could try and do a urban heat sink oriented projects and look at trying to get some funding for reflective payment. I am totally on board with that. I would really enjoy doing that.
And I will just jump in and say that I don't have the funds yet, so it's not a thing, but it is definitely a thing that I have been looking for funding for. We want to do some reflective surfaces work in District Seven. It is obviously not something I can just pull out of our regular capital budget, but we've been looking for different levels of funding for that. So stay tuned on that one. The minute we get that, that will be in the District Seven newsletter, so you can all know about it. Okay, I've lost track. I think Ben was next.
Yeah, I had one more quick question. One thing I've always thought about because I I bike right by Monty Vista Elementary School on my way to work every day. And I was wondering if considering this, you know, PCI condition, has there any ever been any discussion of like maybe having a a rule or something that within a one mile radius of of every school that we don't let the pavement get below a certain quality, just so it's safe and comfortable for kids to be able to ride their bikes to school? I think that would be something worth exploring. I don't know if it's ever been discussed or not, but I was wondering if anybody had any thoughts about that.
That's a great question, Ben. I can't say that I've I've already been presented that question. So yeah, it's a new thing to think about. I always appreciate having new items brought to the table and and to bring it into the discussion. So it's definitely something we can we can look at in the future.
Yeah, I I love that question. Thank you. I the first thing that pops to mind is, first of all, that I've never thought of it. But I I'm on the ABCGC, which is the Albuquerque Burnley County and APS Intergovernmental Commission. And that that's a topic I'd like to bring up with with that group and see if there's something we should be thinking through. I I just never brought it up, but I'm taking notes and I'm going to bring it up with that group if that's okay with you. And stay tuned for an answer because honestly, it never had occurred to me either. And then I think Cheryl is next. And if I'm missing someone, please just interrupt. But I think Cheryl was next. Go ahead, Cheryl.
Hi, good morning. Thank you for this presentation. It's been very interesting. I just as I've been listening, it suddenly popped into my head that when I'm driving down the street, sometime remember how for a while we were using crushed glass or like broken but not sharp edged. It had somehow been churned as though to polish in the in the medians instead of bark or gravel, they were putting crushed glass. I think there are a few instances of it still in existence on a few streets, but we seem to have just totally quit doing that. And I was just kind of wondering why it seemed like a nice use of our recycled glass and of course would reduce, you know, gravel mining and that sort of thing. But anyway, just a question, I realize it doesn't have a lot to do with resurfacing, but it popped into my head.
Well, thank you, Cheryl. I appreciate the question. Unfortunately, for my position, that is not something I oversee. That's a solid waste department. I'm still, I haven't been at the city of Albuquerque long. I've been there about eighteen twenty months now. But yeah, that's that's our solid waste department. It maintains our our medians. The municipal development does not.
I don't know. I'll just jump in because I we've working on it. We've been working on a couple of median issues in District Seven, Cheryl. And I don't know the answer to that question. So I I know Amanda's listening and she'll take notes and find out what happened to that because I don't know that. But I will say that the the medians that we're working on in District Seven with solid waste right now, rather than having that conversation around like, are we putting big rocks or small rocks? Because I don't think there should be any rocks. We are trying to maximize greenery, maximize trees, maximize low level bushes, pollinator plants, things like that in those medians to really help with urban heat islands, but also, you know, to help with just beautification of the city. And so, you know, look for those. We're going to have four going on in Lomas very soon. And I say very soon in government speak, which means in the next, you know, six or so months, not tomorrow. But we have gotten the contracts on that. We got the funding for for those. So that's kind of the the focus that I'm putting on medians is just more green, less of any other kind of material. And of course, now with the GSI inclusion in complete streets, really making sure that we're not putting impermeable pavement or impermeable materials in those medians and when possible, thinking about GSI. So that's kind of the the trend that I'm seeing on medians. Michelle, sorry.
Yeah. The the state's saying that they are going to have less reserves. So that might mean more money for this to to the city if they do that because it's one time thing. And there's something called life cycle costing where you pay more in the first place having them done, but they're they're guaranteed. They they last longer. So if they have more money to work with, maybe they could could do that and and make them last longer because there's such a backlog. It's frustrating. The state has all this money and we have so many needs trying to get them together. Thanks.
Yeah, thanks for that, Michelle. And yes, we have way more need than we have money. Another factor that I hate to bring into this is we also have way more need than we have contractors. And we are fighting with NMDOT, with Burnley County. We're not alone in the fact that we are not finding enough contractors. All of us are kind of like we're we're pulling from that small pool and we're kind of fighting each other and we're trying to play nice, but there's a limited amount of contractors. So even if you gave us all the money in the world right now, it it we still wouldn't have the the resources to actually implement it, unfortunately. So I if anyone wants to start an asphalt company, we are in need of one.
Just don't do it in the South Valley. There's enough down there. But I you know, I I'll just add to that, you know, I think there's always this idea that the reason that things aren't happening quickly in government, particularly on roads, medians, bike paths, all of the things that we we all are talking about is that there's a lack of money. And there's certainly not just money rolling everywhere. But there are serious and legitimate concerns around. We just don't have the workforce. We don't have the contractors for a lot of this work. We also just have major supply chain issues that I that was a phrase I didn't even know four years ago. And now it is just the bane of our existence. Somebody mentioned the crosswalk at at Macklin. You know, I approved that project back before redistricting. I paid for half and Counselor Benton paid for half because we were splitting Carlisle at that time. That was how long ago that project was approved. And it took that long to get the the equipment to put it in. And so I I just, you know, I think DMD and all of Director Morrow's staff really does an amazing job. But there's just a limit on how quickly things can get done. And I I I know it's frustrating. I get frustrated too, but I I just think we have to realize that we just have a shortage of lots of things that are not money on some of this stuff. Let's see, Cheryl, was your hands back up? I don't want to miss you.
No, I put it back down. Thank you so much.
Okay, all right. Mary Kenny.
I just wondered if there is a site, and I'm sure there is, to understand what the prioritization is. Like, if I wanted to know when San Mateo is going to be addressed because it's pretty bad. Where is that in terms of how do I find out the schedule in the priority?
Well, thanks for the question. That is exactly why we're having this discussion. And I I would actually like to talk to Counselor Feebelkorn about maybe some suggestions of how we do this because we do often get asked by the counselors and we can look at the program. And we could say, oh, it's on our five year schedule. Or or we could or it might be, no, it's it's outside of our five year outlook. And then, you know, the ones that were are within the one year, we we can pretty solidly, like someone had mentioned before that they were told that it was going to be done within November. That means you're good to go, right? You are you are on the list and it's going to happen. But as I stated before, we're always looking at the PCI indexes and rainstorms, snowstorms. Any lot of things happen that change the conditions of roads. So there's often something that'll happen, even a sinkhole with Albuquerque Water Authority or something like that can change our conditions of roads and our priorities shift instantly. So we try not to look more than a year out. We try and keep really small windows because we don't want to promise someone and not deliver. So we kind of look at this year, what we're definitely doing. And then we kind of do a generic out five year outlook. And but like I say, it's a pavement condition is always changing. It's always and unfortunately, it's always deteriorating unless we invest money in it. And and we try and be flexible with that. So it's difficult for us to say your road will be done in two years. You know, we don't want to say that. And then we have to push it off because something happened and we had to prioritize something else. So it's kind of a not very exact science.
I'll also jump in and say, one of the reasons that DMD is not able to just, you know, say, these are the priorities and this is how we're doing them is they have nine different counselors calling them on a daily basis, saying, I want my road done. And there's a lot of juggling that has to happen with that. And they they do it really well, but it it is, I I would not want their job. Let me put it that way. Saw a hand. Steve.
Yeah, I just want to point out one example of what a great job DMD did. We had a bicyclist go down. He hit a like a heave in the pavement. So that was kind of hidden by shadows. And they went down and hurt himself. And I believe DMD was out there the next day fixing that that particular problem in the pavement. So you know, sometimes it takes a a long time to get something done, but DMD has done a great job of responding to at least that particular issue where a bicyclist is actually hurt due to defects in the pavement. But and I want to thank and give kudos to the DMD for that particular incident.
Thank you, Steve. I appreciate having that positive feedback. I also want to give my staff a plug. I have heard that almost every pothole complaint that does come in through three one one is typically repaired between twenty four and forty eight hours. So I I got to give kudos to my staff. They're they're amazing.
All right, I see Cheryl. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, sorry. Yes, I did have my hand up still, but and then I will. But but now I put it back. Then I had another question. Okay. I missed something at the very beginning. What does DMD stand for?
Oh, my apologies. Department of Municipal Development. It's probably one of the largest departments, isn't it, the Council Feebelkorn? We oversee, we have what we call the vertical side and the horizontal side. My side is the horizontal side, which is basically I oversee everything in the road right away is my responsibility. And then we have a vertical site where we help with construction of like new fire stations, swimming pools, a variety of of vertical of architectural projects.
I see. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
I think Lee Whitling, is that a hand up over there?
Oh, I'm sorry if I missed somebody.
No, maybe not. Looks like the hand came down.
Okay, I will. Now we got Michelle hand up. Go ahead, Michelle.
While we're at it, what's a handy, if you see a construction project out there, what's a handy dandy way to look up and see what it is?
A handy dandy way, we are working on getting our latest project updates up on our website. That should be released very, very soon. So if you can have a little patience with us, we're just going through it, finalizing it, but we hope to have that. There is actually an older one that is not updated because we switched platforms and we're trying to get that a new platform up to date. So I apologize for the gap between the old one and where we're at now. But we are very focused on it and we expect to have it up in the next few weeks.
Oh, where would you look? What are you talking about?
Oh, go to the city of Albuquerque website. And you should be able to find it, I think, under you know, I hate to say this, they just send me the links. Maybe we could, Council Feebelkorn, do you have a way that we can post stuff later for people? We can provide them the link when that gets posted?
Yeah, we can do a, we can even just do like a follow up in the next newsletter. So everybody gets it with any data you want to include.
Okay, well, I'll I'll follow up with Counselor Feebelkorn and get that information out.
And then I'll also just add, you know, in District Seven, don't ask me about outside of District Seven because I really don't know. But if it's in District Seven and there's a question and it's not available on the DMD website, just reach out to our office. We were we're always happy to tell you if we already know. And if we don't know, we will find out and that helps us know what's going on.
What's the DMD website? That's what I was asking.
Oh, city of Albuquerque. And then you go to the government departments and the Department of Municipal Development. I'm flipping over here.
CABQ DMD, would that take you right there?
It's cabq.gov/municipal, front slash municipal development.
Thanks.
All right. Any other questions? We have about five minutes left. And if I don't see a question, I think I'll end with a question of mine, which is, I know you can't tell us when, but can you just give us an idea of maybe some of the District Seven roads that are that are priorities in the, you know, in the coming years?
And well, we we have our the mayor's constructability conversations. He is going to go over the roads that we have dedicated for this year. And at this time, that's the only information I have from our streets department. I can work with Dave Harrison and see if we have some what's on the major hit list on there and and get back to you on that.
All right. And you guys all do know about the discussion tonight, the District Seven discussion tonight. If you want to join that, I believe you have to RSVP through the mayor's website. But if you want to come, make sure you RSVP and we'll see you there. If not, just reach out if you need questions. And I think if we're done, if there's no other questions, no other comments, I will give you back your four minutes. I really appreciate you all coming on on this first Friday of every month and learning about the different departments and the different work that we see happening around the city. It's always nice to get to hear from everybody. Thank you for being here. If you have somebody that needed to see this and you want to give them a chance to look at it, just tell them to look for the newsletter and it'll be a link there. And with that, I'm going to close it out. I do see a few hands. I can stay on for a few minutes after, but I'm going to close down the discussion and thank Deputy Director Morrow for attending and giving us all this information. We really appreciate you being here.
Well, thank you so much.
Bye bye.
Bye bye.
And then if I I did see Cheryl, yes.
So what is the District Seven meeting about tonight? Is it on Zoom or?
No, it's in it's in person and you can get all the information through the mayor's website.
Okay.
Yeah. And Steve, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand go up.
Her her, your answer to her question answered my question. So thank you very much.
Sure. Okay, I'm going to head out. We will see you next month. Just remember, first Friday of every month here at ten o'clock and we will learn something new. Thanks again.
Thank you.